Go ahead, Tricia.
I want to call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Rachel, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Gary Anderson.
Here.
Melissa Fabian.
Here.
Colleen Niedemeyer.
Here.
Matt O'Brien.
Here.
Dan Warden.
Yes, here.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the, it would be the approval of the agenda. Let's do the approval of the agenda first. Are there any changes to the agenda, or does it stand as approved, as submitted? Okay, if you know changes will be stand as submitted. The next thing on the agenda, the election of officers. We'll do the election of the chair, and then we'll turn the meeting over to the chair. Are there any nominations for the position of chair?
I would like to nominate Matt O'Brien, since he was the vice chair.
Okay. Is there a second to that nomination?
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? I'd entertain a motion for nomination cease.
I so move.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Matt, you're the new chair. You can have the rest. You need to elect a vice chair.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for election of vice chair.
I would move for Melissa Fabian to be vice chair.
I'd second it.
We have a motion made by Gary, seconded by Colleen, for Melissa Fabian as vice chair. All those who approve, say aye.
Aye.
All those who disapprove, say nay. Hey, Melissa Fabian is elected vice chair. And then we did the agenda already, correct, Tricia?
Yeah.
Then, any corrections or additions to the minutes? No corrections or additions, a stand. Then item number four, change the zone.
Okay. Um, Paul Gritz is requesting a rezoning for 1512 Street Northwest from Z2 Suburban to Z4 Multi-Use District. We're asking you to hold a public hearing tonight and to make a recommendation on the rezoning, and forward that to the city council. The subject property is located near the intersection of North Federal Avenue and 12th Street Northwest. There's currently a freestanding house with a detached accessory structure on the lot. The owner, Shirley Stephen, has accepted an offer to purchase from Paul Gritz. Mr. Gritz owns the local Domino's franchise and intends to relocate the store out of the Latner Building to 1112 North Federal Avenue. That building used to be the Clean Suite Construction Building. Because the number of employees and the expanded seating inside the restaurant, Mr. Gritz is required to provide off-street parking. The site is tight, so a site plan was approved initially for an accessory parking lot across the street on a vacant lot that Mr. Gritz also owns. This isn't an ideal setup for customers who would be required to cross 12th Street and North Federal. The new restaurant is also going to have a drive-up pickup window, and access to the window is challenging. Mr. Gritz extended an offer to purchase to Ms. Stephen, and it has been accepted. We have approved a moving plan for the house that's on the lot. So we have someone who intends to move about two and a half blocks away. Mr. Gritz intends to combine the subject property with 1112 North Federal and develop it as, develop it with off-street parking and a better configured drive-up lane. As the commission knows, if the rezoning is successful, this property could be used for any form or function allowed in the Z4 zoning district. The rezoning will not limit the future use just as an accessory parking lot. The neighboring property is, or the property is bounded on the north by 12th Street Northwest, on the east by the former Clean Suite Construction Building, and on the south and west by residential properties. The land of the northwest, west, and southwest is Zone Z2 Multi-Use District, and the land to the northeast, east, and southeast is Zone Z4 Multi-Use District. The purpose of the Z2 district is to provide an area primarily developed with attached, single-family, detached, detached, single-family residences, open lawns, and the occasional corner store, corner office. We also allow duplex, two-flats, and row houses in this district. Neighborhood and community parks, greenways, and often on street trails are typical. The transportation network would be a network of streets and sidewalks. Typically, a Z2 neighborhood is highly walkable. The purpose of the Z4 Multi-Use District is to provide a space for a mixture of retail, personal, and business services, offices, lodging, automotive, civic, and medium-to-high-density residential uses that are necessary to support the needs of the overall community. Although, and I want to remind everybody that although the applicant has stated his intention to construct accessory parking on the lot, that the rezoning is successful, the property can be used for any purpose allowed by right in the zoning ordinance. In addition, the zoning board of adjustment can approve any form or function noted as a conditional use in the ordinance. That'd be on the form and function table in Chapter 8. Neither the commission or the council has the power to impose conditions on the rezoning at this point. Section 8, 1283, is attached to your staff report, that is the form and function table, and it identifies what uses are permitted in the neighborhood, or in the various zoning districts. Iowa law requires that any rezoning be in conformance to the jurisdiction's comprehensive plan. In your packet, you'll find a couple of tables out of the comp plan. The future land use map does identify the subject property as an area of mixed-use-one land use. In addition, all the abutting properties and those located on the north side of 12th Street Northwest also fall into that, this category. So just to make sure you understand, the residential properties to the east and southeast of this property are also included in that area of future mixed-use-one land use. Typically, sites are located at the intersections of major arterial or collector's streets, and development emphasizes the relationships among the parts. Land uses should be limited in terms of operational effects with good landscaping and restrictive signage standards. The site should be well-connected with pedestrian and bicycle accommodations into the surrounding area. The dominance of the automobile should be moderated by appropriate project design. While the future land use map provides a development vision for the city, it cannot anticipate the design or specific situation of every rezoning application. Therefore, the map should not be taken as a literal lot-by-lot prescription of how land shall be used. Rather, it provides a context to support logical decisions which implements the plan's overall principles. Your packet includes two tables out of the comprehensive plan. The first is, first is the land use plan categories and use criteria that presents and defines the various land use categories proposed in the plan and establishes criteria for their application. Title 3.9 Land Use Compatibility Guide presents a land use compatibility guide that assesses the relationships between adjacent land uses and provides a basis for review of land use proposals based on their surroundings. These tables together are a framework for findings by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. The purpose of the land use of land is compatible with the mixed-use-one land use category as it's described in Table 3.8. If the proposed rezoning is approved, the land to the west, northwest, and south would remain zoned Z2 Suburban District, which falls within the low-density urban residential land use category. While Mason City generally encourages a mix of land use, Table 3.9 identifies a compatibility rating of 2 between the low-density urban residential and urban corridor mixed land use categories. A rating of 2 denotes that the proposed use has significant conflicts with the pre-existing adjacent use. The comprehensive plan also notes that the planned unit development, a zoning district in use at the time the plan was developed, but we know, one that we no longer use, is required in all cases to assess project impact and define development change. And I just want to mention that a lot of the things that you would normally find in a planned unit development are in our zoning ordinance as requirements, and we do have a little bit of flexibility when it comes to development. So, you know, we, we have determined that we don't need a planned unit development classification in our zoning ordinance, because the rest of the ordinance has the flexibility you would typically find in a PUD. There are also some smart growth principles in the comprehensive plan. The smart growth is our alternate ways to enhance rather than destroy the community's special qualities. Smart growth represents a synthesis between the desire of developers and communities to take advantage of opportunities and public benefits and environmental sensitivity, economic efficiency, and enhancement of community and civic life. There are several goals that were assessed that are included in your packet. We always address the question of spot zoning. We don't believe that this request is a request for a spot zone. A spot zone is when the rezoning of a particular piece of land, when the rezoning is at odds with the comprehensive plan and existing development, and is generally only done in the interest of a small area or a limited number of property owners. Spot zoning can arise when a property is rezoned to a different zoning classification than the surrounding property. A spot zone by itself is not illegal, and we do occasionally hear the argument that all rezoning is a spot zoning. However, not all spot zoning will survive a court challenge. The strongest case can be made when the rezoning can be supported by the comprehensive plan and is in the best interest of the community. In this case, the proposed rezoning is supported by the comprehensive plan. It does not just benefit one property owner or a small area, and it extends an existing area of Z4 zoning. We sent notices out to the property owners within 350 feet, and we posted a public notice sign on the property. To date, we have received two comments regarding the proposed rezoning. Robert Luger from 1111 North Washington Avenue is the owner and occupant of the house directly west of the subject property. He wrote with questions regarding the rezoning and the proposed parking lot. He questioned how the rezoning would impact the value of his property. He also asked about how his property taxes would be impacted. He did have some questions specific to landscaping and made a specific request about screening on the west property line. Now, the commission does not have the legal authority to impose conditions on a rezoning, so requiring specific landscaping is not a role for the commission. However, the development on the property will need to provide landscaping in accordance with the comprehensive, with the zoning ordinance. And we've included a copy of Mr. Luger's letter, including, and actually, just, I just want to clarify that if a parking lot is constructed on the property, the applicant will be required to provide more landscaping than what Mr. Luger requested. We also received a letter, a letter, see the letter or an email from Mark and Lori Ellingson. They're at 1101 North Washington Avenue. They live just south of Mr. Luger. They object to the rezoning. If the rezoning is approved, they ask that Mr. Gritz be required to install a fence along their common property line. I spoke with Mrs. Ellingson, interviewed the landscaping requirements with her, and their, a copy of their letter is also attached to your staff report. We're asking you to hold a public hearing on the requested rezoning. After considering the comments made during the hearing, we ask that the commission make a recommendation to be forwarded to the city council. We are planning on having a public hearing in front of the city council at their May 5 meeting. We are recommending that the application be approved. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
Not at this time, no.
Mr. Gritz is here in the, in the Mason City room, so I think we will go ahead and have him speak first and ask any questions.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
See you too.
Yeah, test one-two, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to turn the mic down, or the speakers down, so we don't get the echo over here. But he is going to address you. Can you see a me too?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, go ahead and take it away.
Hi, I'm Marty Gritz, Paul Gritz officially, but I go by my middle name of Marty. I've owned the Domino's here since 2005. Last time I was in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I was working on developing a lot across the street. Unfortunately, that plan came in a lot more expensive than I thought it would be, and so the opportunity to buy Clean Sweep came up, and it looks like a good fit for, for my business, especially with additional parking next door. I'm happy to be a good neighbor to whoever's up there and do whatever landscaping we need to fit in and, and make a happy, successful business up there. Any questions for me?
Anyone in the commission have a question for Mr. Gritz?
I guess I just have a question about the, the access to the site. With, so the Clean Suite building is getting converted.
Can you start again? Sorry, I had to turn the speaker back up.
Oh, okay, sorry. I just have a question, I guess, about the access to the, the lot. So the Clean Suite business is going to be the actual business with the extra lot being a parking area. So driving by the Clean Sweep, you have access off of North Federal and 12th Street onto that property, right?
Yes, the way we have the plan now, the North Federal entrance will be an exit only, and we'll do a new driveway into the new parking area. And then the existing driveway that's on 12th Street will be narrowed.
Oh, okay, so where the Clean Sweep does right now, just kind of drive right onto the property altogether, you're going to restrict that point?
That'll still be available to drive over to Federal and exit.
Right.
But there won't be any parking there on the north part of the building, where Joe used to park his trucks and everything.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Gritz? Thank you, Marty.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here in the audience who wishes to address the commission? Can you give your name and address, and then your comments? Thank you.
Robert Luger, 1111 North Washington. I guess all I want to know from why these property line to the new development, parking lot, whatever, how much space I'm going to have in between my halls.
The minimum setback from the west property line for parking will be 10 feet.
There'll be at least 10 feet from the parking lot line to the parking lot.
Right.
And then they will require to provide landscape.
Work them out, some two.
And a fence too. Like the landscape department. Just go over that a little bit. Am I quite in this, Tricia?
That's fine.
Basically, there's a requirement that you have to go through three, there are five items that they can choose from, of which they have to provide three. We have to have a landscape screen, sort of at least 10 feet wide. Measure per particular, like in common lot lines, you can eventually shrug and earn a little trees. Sufficient quantity to arrange to provide that as a screen, as a bird. Second is one tree for every 30 linear feet of lot line, continuous to residential properties, with a piece 40% of the street being our range. Third one is continuous, continuous shrub or, or head, no less than five feet, and no more than eight, to the height, right, of the sinkboards and/or the hardwoods. Fourth is inert firm of theoretical space, and if it is a solid, or a fence, or makes you want to leave the requirements of this scatters. I was about to height and the physicality of the fence, so we have to pick three of those five. We've been talking with Marty about fence, and he's eager for that. Now, that'll show up in his final, right, when he can be involved.
And I just want to clarify that that landscaping requirement is going to apply on the west property line of the parking lot and on the south side of the parking. So it'd have to screen both the Luger property and the Ellingson property.
So both of the, of the people that responded by, you know, by email, the Ellingsons also will have that same requirement along their common property line. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on this application?
I'm good, I'll look.
Thank you. I have two attendees. If either of the attendees wants to speak on this particular item, could you please use the raise hand function? How do they do it from the phone?
Phone, just first, oh, if, if they want to raise a hand. Doesn't want to raise a hand, they go to their phone, and then you under the, to your phone, and ask if they have a comment.
Mr. Schoneman, did you want to comment on this one?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh geez, okay, I've never done this. No, I have no questions. Happy to see development up there.
Okay, thank you. I have a participant on the phone, 515-971-6709. Did you want to speak on this application? Not hearing anything, we'll go ahead and move on. So Matt, if you want to go ahead and ask for any additional comment or for a motion?
So basically, we, we don't need officially, we close the public hearing, and then we go to comments for the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. So we will, any further comments? So we'll close the public hearing, then discuss with the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Tricia, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've, have we had kind of similar situations like this? I mean, budding up Z4 to Z2 versus a Z3 buffer? I mean, don't we have areas like this already?
We, yes, we do have, it's not uncommon. I mean, right now, we have, with the building to the south of the old Clean Suite building, we have, that's Z4 that buds up against Z2. The board has also acted on requests for rezoning from Z2 to Z4, I guess, the one I'm thinking of was Z3 to Z4. That was a different case because it was an isolated island of Z4. This is incorporating it into an existing Z4 zone. But yeah, it's not, it is not unusual in Mason City to have Z2 right against Z4, especially in the North Federal Corridor. That's how the neighborhood developed. It was commercial along Federal and, and close by residential, because it was a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it did, it did. It's, I mean, this is a unique corner, because it's such a high-traffic area.
Exactly. Which is one of the reasons we didn't, you know, the, for us, it was parking of last resort with the parking lot across the street.
Right.
I think it'll function better with the, from the restaurant's perspective, it'll function better with the parking to, on the south side of the street. I hate to get too hung up on the parking, because the rezoning just isn't for parking. It's for any use that's allowed in the Z4 zoning district. So, you know, including residential uses. So I want, you know, I, I know we're totally talking a lot about how the site's going to lay out, how the parking lot's going to function, and I just want to make sure that we're kind of focusing on the long-term implications of this, so.
But the comprehensive plan does, does, it does support this idea.
It does. Washington Avenue, North Washington is the boundary that's shown on the future land use map, and I know we always caution you guys not to pay too much attention to where that line is, that the line can be a little bit fuzzy. This is clearly an area where, you know, the long-term plans were to, you know, very, very long-range were to do a better job of integrating the residential and the commercial.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
It's all Z4, right?
What was that?
So the rest of it, when you're going up and down Federal, is all Z4, right, for the zoning?
Yeah, for the most part.
Most part, okay. So even in the future, it'd be similar businesses to that?
Yes.
What, we're already there, so.
Well, if we're ready for a motion, I would make one.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval or denial of a rezon.
I would move that we approve the request to rezon 1512 Street Northwest from Z2 Suburban District to Z4 Multi-Use District, and send that to the city council.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, we have, Gary has moved to recommend approval of the rezon 1512 Street Northwest from Z2 Suburban District to Z4 Multi-Use District. Melissa Fabian has seconded. So Rachel, will you call the roll?
Anderson. Anderson?
Yes.
Fabian?
Yes.
Niedemeyer?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we're at item number five, unfinished business.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, we've talked about this for a couple of meetings. We are requesting that you hold a public hearing regarding the proposed text amendments to Title 12-18 of the zoning ordinance. And the proposed amendment does strike the entire chapter and replace it, replace it. After the public hearing, we're asking you to make a recommendation with the city council. And we are recommending that you recommend to city council that they approve the ordinance. As you know, FEMA is issuing new flood insurance. As you know, FEMA is issuing new flood insurance rate maps for Mason City and a new flood insurance study. The maps will become effective on June fifth of twenty twenty. We participate in the National Flood Insurance Program and prior to the adoption date, we are required to amend our existing floodplain regulations to incorporate the new maps and any additional regulatory requirements. Since our floodplain ordinance was last amended, there have been changes to state and FEMA regulations. And to incorporate these changes, it was easier to adopt a new entire new floodplain management ordinance instead of amending the existing ordinance. The proposed amendment is very similar to the prior version of the ordinance and the impact the community on the community should be minimal. The amendment carries forward the enhanced regulations adopted by the city, including regulation of the shaded zone X flood zones with several exceptions, increased elevation requirements for new and substantially improved structures, increased elevation requirements for flood control structures, limits on the amount of fill that can be placed in the floodplain, and requirements for the composition of fill placed in the floodplain. Due to changes in FEMA regulations or guidance, we've amended some of the either amended or included new definitions, including base flood elevation, enclosed area below lowest floor, five hundred year floodplain, flood insurance study, lowest floor, maximum damage, potential development, structure, substantial damage, and substantial improvements. The following regulations have been added or changed. The map panels used for floodplain management in the community were updated. The Mason City's floodplanes are mapped over fourteen different maps. And every time a new map is adopted, they add a new letter onto the end of the name, so we have to reference those by name. A language related to flow through foundation systems was updated to specify that openings must be located on at least two sides of the foundation. That is a regulation that was strongly recommended by FEMA because there have been issues where property owners who have flood insurance not getting appropriate payouts because they did not have openings on two sides of the foundation. Language prohibiting the conversion of enclosed space below grade is added. We did that because we have at least one example of a house that was built with a base an enclosed area below grade with a ceiling height of greater than five feet. And we issued floodplain permit for it back in the nineteen eighties. And after the permit was issued, it was the the lower level was promptly finished with three bedrooms, a family room and a bathroom, which we ended up paying for when we bought the house after the flood buyout. The term maximum damage potential development is defined. This is a new concept in our ordinance. And there's also some regulations of this type of development located in the in the ordinance draft. And language relating to shallow flooding areas was were deleted because Mason City does not have that flood zone. The administration of the floodplain ordinance does not change. All permits in Mason City are screened to determine if the development is located within the floodplain. Any deviation from the provisions of the ordinance must be reviewed and approved by the zoning board of adjustment. We respectfully request that you hold a public hearing on the text amendment. After considering the comments made during the hearing, we ask the commission make a recommendation to be forwarded to the city council. We are recommending that the application be approved. There is a draft of the ordinance amendment attached to your staff report. And I want to apologize, there was a a mix up. We put the packet together and we had put the packet together and then they asked us for a last, the DNR asked us for a last minute change in the ordinance. We had to insert four words. And when we took the packet down, made that change and put it back up, somehow we managed to get the old one and the new one included in the packet, so. But other than that, are there any questions?
I guess one question is, this is not just residential, right? I mean, this applies to everything.
That's correct. And it isn't just the construction of structures. It applies to all development in the floodplain, which also includes changes to the landforms. It includes outside storage of grain, which for some reason is very important to the DNR that that be included. So anything that falls into the definition of development that's in the ordinance would be covered by this ordinance.
Just wanted to emphasize again that the reason we do this is what this is what allows us to participate in the national and flood insurance program. You know, if we didn't have an ordinance, then we couldn't participate, which would put those people who have structures within a floodplain at risk. So this enables them to be able to purchase insurance through that program to protect themselves. The other thing is, is that the DNR does review these requirements and they are specific as to what we need to include, so. Although we have a little bit of flexibility and Tricia knows a lot more about this than I do, but for the most part, what we have is what the DNR is requiring us to have. Would is that a fair statement, Tricia?
It is. And if, you know, we do have the enhanced regulations and if anybody wants more information about that, I think we've already discussed why we did that. I'd be happy to talk about that if anybody wants to hear it yet again.
On page sixteen of the new ordinance under substantial improvement, that's not new language, is it? I know with flood insurance, the the program, that's language that I've seen before. And I'm just curious, did we have that in the ordinance before?
What page was that, Gary?
It's page six of nineteen.
Six, okay, I thought you said sixteen.
Oh, I mean, it did, yeah. Substantial improvement?
No, I believe that that's the same language we had before. Well, no, there is a change to that. The one thing that we add, the one thing that we did add to that was the cumulative measure of improvements. So it used to be, and with the current ordinance, you can make improvements to a structure and then revalue that structure that takes into account the value of the improvements, which would set a new threshold for improvements, and then you could come back in and do improvements. And really what it was is a way to that people could get around the mechanism that once you make a certain amount of improvements to your property, you have to bring it into compliance. And so the DNR strongly suggested that we include the language that accumulates aggregates, all the improvements that are made to the structure in the prior ten years. One of the reasons that that they choose that ten year measure is because it also feeds into the the definition of substantial damage. Because with substantial damage, we look at damages that have occurred over the past ten years. So that is slightly different. The ten the ten year aggregation measure.
So any other discussion? So we will open the public hearing for comments from public.
There is a member of the public here at the Mason City Room. Give your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Merlin Bart. My address is two zero eight one four hundred and ten Street Grafton, Iowa. And let me begin by, first of all, thanking members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me the opportunity to share some comments at the public hearing. And I believe Commissioner Fabian also congratulations on your recent, what was it, Iowa Main Street Leadership Award that you received? Congratulations on that. I saw I saw that either on Facebook or local media somewhere, so.
Thank you. Thanks.
My wife Lisa and I are agricultural property owners in the northwest corner of Mason City. Some of you might call this property the wholesome property. It's bordered by twelfth Street Northwest and North Tap Avenue and crossed by Willow Creek. I do have these comments in writing. I've provided a copy to Steve and also to City Administrator Aaron Burnett, and I have some extra copies for the other members of the commission if you'd like to pick them up. Let me start with by giving three quotes from the preface letter that accompanies the floodplain management amendment. The first is a quote from that letter saying the proposed amendment strikes the existing chapter in its entirety and adopts one in this place. Let me repeat. The first one says the proposed amendment strikes the existing chapter in its entirety and adopts a new one in its place. The second quote is, we are required to amend our existing floodplain regulations to incorporate the new maps and any additional regulatory requirements. And the third quote is, the proposed amendment is very similar to the prior version of the ordinance and the impact to the community should be minimal. Some comments regarding these particular three quotes. First, as a former state legislator, I soon realized, serving in Des Moines, that a strike after an enacting clause and insert was one of two things, a recipe for unintended consequences or a potential mechanism for mischief. A strike and insert essentially forces a reader trying to analyze the documents to play side by side the replaced version language with the replacement version language and then try to find one by one differences. I've spent about two hours over the course of yesterday afternoon and this morning, looking at these two documents side by side and still have not completed the comparison. Generally, in the legislative process, an explanation of those changes would be included. The letter, the preface letter to these lists very few of the changes that are actually contained within the replacement language. There are some there are some minor bullet points regarding definition changes. I believe one of the commissioners brought the substantive damage one up, and there are also five or six bullet points regarding minor changes within the language. Second, I certainly understand the federal requirement to amend existing floodplain regulations and the desire for the city of Mason City to remain compliant with both federal and state law. The maps are pretty self explanatory, frankly, based on the latest satellite elevation data, although even the maps had some mistakes, as your competent city staff noticed and had to work on getting changed. The language, however, presents a whole different realm of questioning. Is this a federal or state template? Was it drafted locally? I I did look at the minutes from the last meeting. Evidently, there was some DNR language provided alternate alternate language, I believe it was it was called. But did the DNR or FEMA have an opportunity to provide comments to a preliminary draft? Were there any consultants used? Were there areas of disagreement between the federal state oversight agencies in the city? And how were these differences resolved? Can the city meet compliance by adopting the maps by June fifth, twenty twenty, but have longer to work on the language? And the reason that I bring up this question is the third point that I wish to make. Even in the two hours that I spent with this, I'm going to focus on one specific change that I believe on the my on the surface, it looks like it may be a minor change, but I believe personally in my first perusal of this document, it will have major unintended consequences. In the current twelve dash eighteen dash twelve floodway overlay district section, certain functions and forms are allowed, including five specific categories that cover agriculture, industrial slash commercial, private and public recreation, four residential, and five other forms and functions. There also, by the way, as a as a additional note, are seven conditional forms and functions listed in yet another paragraph. Those current descriptions in the current floodway overlay district section include words such as, quote, gardens, picnic grounds, horseback riding trails, forestry, et cetera, et cetera. Under the proposed replacement language, all of the five specific categories that I mentioned and the seven conditional forms and functions that I did not mention are struck. They are struck. It's literally a whole page struck from from the floodway overlay district section. And to replace it is inserted replacement language that says that they will be governed by a cross reference to chapter twelve dash eight dash three, table two. So basically, you would have to go to that section of planning and zoning in order to find that table. And that section of planning and zoning, chapter twelve point eight, excuse me, twelve dash eight dash three, table two, is governed by a whole different set of definitions that are set up in twelve dash two dash two, which, by the way, does not create or does not contain any diff any definitions for words like agricultural, gardens, picnic grounds, forestry, any of the seven conditional forms and functions or the five permitted forms and functions that are listed under the current twelve point eight or twelve dash eighteen dash twelve. You might think that this doesn't present a problem. However, the table two in twelve dash eight dash three is also governed by twelve dash one dash six. And I will quote that, and that's contained in your packet. Quote, whenever in any zoning district, a form or function is neither specifically permitted nor denied within table twelve dash eight dash two comma, the form or function shall be considered prohibited. The potential unintended consequence is that the new replacement language may have essentially taken away five current categories of allowed forms and functions and seven conditional categories of allowed forms and functions and effectively prohibit it then. If unintended, it needs to be corrected. If intended, it should not be represented as a minor change to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it should be explained in the preface letter that it's a major change to floodway protect or the floodway protection section of 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 Mason City's zoning ordinances. As a final note, it's my understanding that the commission, as of April first, is functioning with, I believe, five members instead of seven, based on conversations that I had with the mayor and counsel I received today. I would request that, given the current commission membership status and these issues brought to your attention at the public hearing, that you delay forwarding a recommendation to the Mason City City Council in regard to the floodplain management amendment proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. And I would certainly be open for any questions.
Okay, do members of the commission have questions for Mr. Bart?
Any questions from the commission?
I guess my questions would be for Tricia or Steve in answering some of his questions that if you're able to do this in the public time or if we have to wait, so.
Typically, we'd wait until after the public hearing closed, so we could address the questions.
Any other questions from the public before we close the public hearing?
We have two attendees. Second, while we turn the speaker off. I've unmuted the person on the phone at five one five nine seven one six seven oh nine. Do you have any comments? There anyone at that, anyone participating at that phone number? You may need to unmute yourself. With no response, I'll go ahead and mute that one. Brett Shoneman, I'll unmute you or you. Brett Shoneman, I'll unmute you, or do you have any comments?
Sure, can you hear me? Am I there?
I can hear you.
Okay. No, I guess if I would have been asked, I, I guess if I would have been asked how the, uh, how they differed, I would have found that very challenging. So I commend, uh, Mr. Barts digging into it and, and finding that. And I think that does raise a concern if, if, uh, if he found something that, that's significantly different. So, um, I would just ask, my input is that, uh, it's looked into. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Brett. I'll go ahead and mute you. And back to you, Matt.
So any other comments from the public? So we will close the public hearing, then discuss among the Planning, Zoning Commission members.
So I guess Tricia or Stephen, if you have a response to some of those, and unfortunately, I don't have those questions written in front of me with this particular format to know. But if there's anything that you can address in, in the concerns that he brought up.
Yeah, I'll try and address them. If Stephen's got the written comments, if I miss anything, let me know. Um, first regarding, you know, holding off adoption, adopting the regulations, but adopting the maps, we can't do that. Um, we have to adopt the ordinance amendment. The ordinance is what adopts the maps. Um, FEMA and the DNR have been very straightforward that we have until June 5th to adopt them, and if we don't adopt them by the June 5th, we risk suspension from the National Flood Insurance Program. And unfortunately, the issues with the maps, um, that was a mistake made by FEMA's mapping contractors, actually ended up delaying this by two months. Um, the intent, I think you guys remember this, the intent was to have this in front of the council um, before now, and we weren't able to do it. So this is, we're really pushing to get this done. Uh, regarding whether or not the DNR has reviewed the ordinance, yes, they have. The ordinance was based on their model ordinance. Um, if the commission remembers, the first draft that you got, there was a lot of redlining in it. Um, the reason there was so much redlining is because our ordinances are structured differently than their model ordinance, so we moved large sections of text around. So, um, there were a lot of changes. The original, when we originally started working with the ordinance, I was working with that ordinance and trying to integrate it into our existing ordinance. I spoke with the deputy city clerk, and she asked me, we, we talked about our options and, and getting the council a markup, and she said, "It would just be easier if you struck the chapter and adopted a chap, a new chapter." Um, so that's what we did. Uh, regarding the section where, um, where the ordinance currently details development that is allowed in the floodway fringe and that that language has disappeared, that came out of the DNR's model ordinance. Um, what they do now is they reference back to whatever the local ordinance allows as land uses. So whatever is in the Form and Function Table, um, is now what's allowed, because they did actually have a very narrow list, and so they're allowing a greater amount of uses in the floodway fringe overlay district, um, because it's not what they did. A lot of the activities that Mr. Barts mentioned about gardening and forestry and things like that would become, would come under the broad term of agriculture. Um, all of those things would fit under agriculture. So, um, agriculture is allowed in a floodplain, and so they would fall into that. What other questions did we have? I'm sorry, I didn't take better notes.
Yes, what I would add is that I think that the list of uses in the Form and Function Table were actually much more expansive than what we did in the prior version. And I think that's to the advantage.
I'm sorry, it was, I was muted while I was talking there. I wanted to add that, um, I think that the list of permitted and conditional uses that are in the Form and Function Table are actually, uh, much more expansive than those that are permitted in the existing text under that, uh, Section 12-18-12. So it actually affords the property owners, uh, a greater, uh, flexibility in terms of forms and functions that they can, uh, have within, uh, the floodplain, within that particular floodplain district. Again, subject to the requirements of, of the ordinance and any permits that are required by state and local law. So I guess, you know, the short way of saying, yes, they're different, but I would say that they're better.
I would agree. I mean, the, the list, the list that's in the current ordinance, um, it's, I don't know how to describe it other than saying that it's just kind of weird. I mean, circuses, carnivals, and similar trans, transient amusement enterprises as a conditional use, um, drive-in theaters, new and used car lots, roadside stands, signs and billboards, marinas, boat rentals, docks, piers, wharves. Um, it, the existing ordinance is much narrower in what we would allow in the floodway fringe overlay district than it is by adopting, um, what is, what the Form and Function Table. And another thing the Form and Function Table does is it, it, because it identifies forms and functions by zoning district, you, you know, the floodway, the floodway, oh, the floodway maps, the floodway districts are overlaid to the zoning. So you're still allowing uses that are, are allowed in the underlying zoning, and, um, so you're keeping like uses compatible. So, you know, the way the current ordinance is set up, you can have, as a conditional form and function, somebody bring in a drive-in theater that is not allowed under the current zoning, and they could make a credible argument that this sec, this section of code allows them to drop a drive-in theater in the middle of a residential zoning district as long as it's in a floodplain. So I think it's, it's a, you know, I'm, I'm glad that they, that the DNR has changed their base ordinance and allowed it to reflect, um, what the community zoning, community's goals are as reflected in their zoning ordinance. Are there any other questions that were asked that I need to address? Or any other questions from the commission?
Mission have any other comments or questions?
Oh, I guess I just, I have a question in the sense of, if we move forward with this, going through the city council and stuff, is, is this set in stone, or can it be modified in time?
What do you mean, modified in time?
Well, I, I mean, if, for instance, is this, if the, if the, we're required to move forward with this document and the maps and everything, is, is that a done deal from the DNR's perspective? Or does the city have the right to go through this and make changes uh, based on situations that may come up?
Oh, are you, are you assuming that this ordinance gets approved? Can we change it in the future?
Right, right.
We can, but we have to have the approval of the DNR. The DNR acts as FEMA's agent, sorry, I had to cross my, um, the DNR acts as FEMA's agent. So we would contact the DNR, tell them what changes we're looking at making, and they would allow us, they would give us, they would review it and let us know whether or not it meets FEMA's minimum standards. That's, that's always the, um, uh, the benchmark that we have to meet is we have to meet FEMA's minimum standards. The state of Iowa also has minimum standards that we have to meet, which is one of the reasons, the, the issue that we run into with that is that those, those minimum standards are a moving target because different FEMA staffers, um, interpret them differently, which is why I had to insert four additional words into a section about, um, structures, substantially improved structures, because, um, a new staffer at FEMA had interpreted the state's, um, model code differently than the state did. And it caused a problem with a new community that was adopting new maps and a new ordinance. So they wanted to make sure we caught it before.
Gary, are you asking this because of compensatory storage? Is that what you were thinking about?
Uh, no, not really. I was, I was just curious whether or not, since this is the DNR model, are, are we being told to follow that model? And if the DNR makes a change, we can? Or can we actually bring forward something if there's a situation that does change? Or somebody has an idea? That's, I wasn't sure how locked into this we were.
We, it, we can change it, we can, we can propose amendments, and as long as we get approval from the DNR, um, FEMA through the DNR, then we can make that change.
Okay.
What we, where, where they really get twisted up is if we want to do something that, um, is less than what they require. So for example, FEMA only requires that things, that structures be elevated above the 100-year flood level. The state of Iowa has a law that says structures have to be elevated a foot above the 100-year flood level, which is why we have an ordinance that says, that we used to have an order that said, you know, a foot above 100-year flood. We know we have the problems with our maps. We know that the, the hydrology on the map sucks. So that's why, in the middle of a, you know, we didn't wait, we didn't do it when, um, FEMA got us a new set of maps. We did that midstream where we adopted, um, the changes required three feet of elevation and started regulating the 500-year floodlines like we do the 100-year floodlines. So that was done independent of a map update. Because once we, you know, honestly, once we realized we had a problem, we were legally obligated to notify the public, and the best way to do that was notify the public, and then regulated in a way to protect them from the errors we acknowledge, that FEMA acknowledged they had with their maps, and they still acknowledge that they have that issue with the maps. So, but yeah, if something hap, you know, if we run into an issue where, um, say somebody wants to do something in the, wants to do something in a specific zoning district, and it's not listed on the Form and Function Table, we can add that. And then by doing that, in the underlying zoning district in the floodplain, they would be allowed to do that. We've done that on numerous occasions. So, um, yeah, it's not, it's not set in stone, but we do have to meet FEMA and the DNR's minimum requirements.
The DNR doesn't say this type of function cannot happen in a flood, a flood district, right? I mean, they don't get into that level of detail.
I can't say that they wouldn't, because we haven't had, run into that issue. They did look at our Form and Function Table when they were reviewing what, when we first started on this, I actually got a marked up, I got a list of issues they had with our current ordinance, things they wanted us to address, that we needed to address in the new ordinance. And then we also got their model ordinance. So, um, yeah, I, the only thing, the only thing that I would think they would step in with and be vigorous about was if we attempted to change the, um, uh, the maximum damage, maximum damage potential language, that is something that's new, and they are very adamant that that has to be included. Um, if we tried to fuss with that, um, they wouldn't be happy.
Well, I see in their definitions, they're, they're talking about mobile home parks. Um, you know, they, they get into a little bit more where they're defining that type of thing versus, I look at the Form and Function Table, and, you know, in the, in the Z1, a fire department or law enforcement is a P2. The DNR doesn't get into that level of detail.
No. No, they, they said, they said if it's allowed in the underlying zoning district, it's allowed in the floodplain as long as it meets the performance standards that are in the floodplain ordinance.
Okay. So our Form and Function Table is kind of that golden key to have things done.
It is. That's where we always start people when they ask us questions.
And that's a little bit easier to, to modify.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission members? I will entertain any motions.
Uh, I guess I would move that we, uh, move the ordinance, floodplain management ordinance 12-18, move, um, that to city council for, for review and approval.
I second.
So we have a motion made by Anderson to recommend approval to the city council for Title 12-18, what, to replace with the floodplain management provisions, and a second from Needham Meyer. So Rachel, can you call the roll?
Anderson?
Yes.
Needham Meyer?
Yes.
Fabian?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Whoops. Motion carried.
Let's see.
Any other items?
This. Oh my goodness. Okay, there we go. I just wanted to check one thing. Did, did all the votes go by roll call?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't know if the first ones did, because that's required by.
We had roll call for change of zone and, uh, the floodplain management ordinance.
I'm talking about all the, the elections. Did those go by roll call?
We did not do that by roll call, I believe. Correct, Rachel?
Correct. We can.
An acclamation.
Okay. Everything has to go by roll call under the proclamation by the governor.
Okay. So go back.
So just, I'd say, ratify the approval of those and issue a roll call right now.
Okay. So, uh, who'd it be? Uh, just roll call for election officers, just have Rachel do that real quick then.
Yeah, just so it's on record as a roll call.
Okay. Rachel, can you do a roll call for, uh, election officers? So to approve, uh, it's gonna prove Matt O'Brien as chair.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Melissa Fabian? Colleen Needham?
Yes.
Matt O'Brien?
Yes.
Dan Warden?
Yes.
And then roll call for Melissa Fabian as vice chair.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Colleen Needham?
Yes.
Melissa Fabian?
Yes.
Matt O'Brien?
Yes.
Dan Warden?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Well, I think we should probably reaffirm the zoning board of adjustment officers at the May meeting then, because we didn't, I don't think we did a.
So if we did a roll call.
Oh, we did? Okay, never mind.
We don't typically say all eyes, or like we did today. So we typically do a roll call.
Well, I led him down the bad path. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, that's okay.
A question, then, things like approval of agenda or minutes, is that something that has to go through a roll call process, too?
There is no votes by anything besides roll call.
Okay.
For electronic.
All for electronic.
Per the Iowa Public Information Board's ruling, everything pertaining to electronic meetings has to go by roll call.
So we should do that for approval agenda right now? Yes, it's a little backwards of it.
Yes, anything that did not go roll call.
Okay, approval agenda, Rachel, can you do the roll call?
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Melissa Fabian?
Yes.
Colleen Needre Meyer?
Yes.
Matt O'Brien?
Yes.
Dan Warden?
Yes.
Minutes.
Agenda approval, then, approval of minutes. Rachel, can you do the roll call?
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Melissa Fabian?
Yes.
Colleen Needre Meyer?
Yes.
Matt O'Brien?
Yes.
Dan Warden?
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved.
Just glad we don't have to start over.
One, one item under miscellaneous, if I could, as you know, we're down two members right now. If anyone knows of someone who is a citizen, who would be a good fit for this commission, please recommend them to the mayor.
So I did, so I noticed on city's website, you used to do it, there's, I mean, I know for other commissioners, or city boards, too, but, so they have to fill out the form and then mail it to city hall, and now they can't do the online form anymore. That's not on the website, correct?
That would be news to me.
I think it's still on the website. I haven't checked.
So I said, I told someone about it, and then they said there's only, there wasn't the online submission anymore.
Well, the city redesigned the website, so it may not be in the same spot that they're used to see in it.
When I'm on the website right now, and when I click to it, it, right, it is just a piece of paper that you would write on. I don't know why they would have changed that, but maybe there's somewhere else where there's a form.
Yeah, we can look into that and get it fixed.
So, so I know a few people, up to Mayor Schickel, if he wants to point them or not. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
So we had, Melissa, so motion made by Melissa, then seconded by Gary to adjourn the meeting, meeting's adjourned.
We'll probably need to do.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Sorry.
Okay.
Rachel, can you call the roll call?
Yes, did you say Fabian moved and Anderson seconded? Is that correct?
I believe it was Fabian first, right, Melissa?
Yep.
Okay.
Needre Meyer seconded.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
Who seconded?
I thought Gary did.
I think I did, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Melissa Fabian?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Colleen Needre Meyer?
Yes.
Matt O'Brien?
Yes.
Dan Warden?
Yes.
So, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Steven and Aaron, can you guys hang on the call so we can talk once everybody's off?
Sure, should I, should I stop the recording further?
Yeah.
Okay.
Meeting's over.
There we go.